We can re-.
I'm in motion, Drew.
My meeting for me, so I can tell that.
I want to do it here. All in favor? All right, let's go back to seven other business and Alberta Health Services meeting. Jeff, can you bring us up?
Yeah. What started as a simple delegation has become a massive deal here. Alberta Health Services, I think we've talked about this before. I asked Mr. Hassan Nafmi to come speak to council about the opioid dependency treatment clinic, and that has since spiraled into the two biggest doctors in the country on the topic wanting to come to council and explain it. Media people, the public relations, it's going to be a whole thing. So, they want to come down November 13th. That's the day that works. That also happens to be a council meeting for you. They feel there'll be quite a delegation. They think there'll be a number of people in attendance, and they like it to be kind of an open-to-the-public meeting. All I wanted to bounce off you was, do you want to do it as basically a one-hour delegation to council and invite the public to attend? Or do you want me to try and push them late and have a public meeting at 7:00 or 7:30? Or are you comfortable with a really an extended delegation? Because I don't want them to travel all the way and we give them 15 minutes under. You know, I want them to have the floor.
Yes, go ahead.
My question is, if we have them come to do an education session, this room is probably not big enough for that purpose.
I just don't even know how to gauge it. I'm not sure.
So, that, well, I think that it behooves us to make a fantastic job at advertising it and get people to come and understand the issue. Because if we all understand the issue, maybe then we can start to have a conversation to lead this or something. Right now, we are not all on the same level of understanding, and rightly so. I mean, that's a new step for us in this stuff.
This room is good for 200 and more.
No, no, I think 75, I think.
75?
Yeah.
You sound greater warming.
I think that's our seating capacity as well. I believe with the, I think we're at 75 if we put up all the chairs. Now, given the attendance at previous delegations and public hearings, 75 would be amazing.
The thing that concerns me is if we move into another venue, we have council.
Well, so that's why I bring it up, that if we do it at 5:00 on the 13th and 300 people show up, we don't have the gym available. It's full of gymnastics stuff. And I don't think we'll have that kind of, that doesn't seem to be that we'd have that many people, but I would expect 40 or 50 people. That's kind of what I have in my head. So I just wanted to throw it out, whether we rent the Remington Theater and do it at 7:00 PM that night and have sure council.
We have 85 seats there.
Okay, so maybe the Carriage Theater or the Senior Center. You know, fill the Senior Center and do that late.
Senior Center probably would be a good venue.
The which?
Senior Center.
And what can they house?
You can put 200 people there.
Oh, we'd have a couple hundred there for sure. But I'd hate to set up over there and nine people show up. That's the other kicker is.
But can we, can we then do quite a bit of an advertisement piece to try to get people and to try to gauge even through social media, the appetite for that? Could you maybe do that even before we decide where to have it?
If we can, I don't think we'll get much response personally, and it's tough to do RSVP for that because people aren't doing RSVP for it.
Especially at 5:00.
Yeah, yeah.
My thoughts are that's happening here. Set this thing up and let them go right into council meeting.
I'm standing with standing.
And standing room and let them stand if they, if it's going to be that big. But in the past, our public meetings like that, I know we're going to get a lot of these standoff-hating people and.
I think you get a lot of your physicians too.
Yes. So I would say let's just set it up in this room. That's why.
Isn't it better to be safe than sorry?
Go ahead.
I, I think if we promote it and get it out there, and if we have six show up, okay. But at least we've done our due diligence and we put it out there because this is a big issue in this community and we want to work together. So if we're advertising it and we're talking about it in every setting we're in, I think we need, like the mayor said, to have it somewhere. If we have six people show up or 200, at least we've tried.
Well, I'm even wondering, is it a fair assumption that we would extend the invite to people in the blood, right?
Of course. You just put it out there, yeah.
Of course.
Yeah.
And they will come?
Yeah.
That issue is important to them. But on the other hand, it's a little too innocent.
On a little bit different note, I wouldn't mind if administration, I know you don't have enough to do as it is, just find out what our rights are when it comes to safe injection sites in town.
As far as allowing them?
As far as allowing them. It's a bit of a controversy right now around, I know that.
There's a lot of case.
Can the towns actually say no or are they directly directed by HHS to sell them, but they have to have them set up?
There's a lot of case study on that based on methadone clinics in D.C. Right, I mean, this is not, he's trying to.
I like an answer to that sometimes.
Okay, we got, we got a question for the, for our C.A.O. Let's do a straw. Counselor Barnes, where do you want to go?
Well, I'm really torn on this because I, I feel like if we only have it up here and a lot of people come up here and it's full, what's it going to cost us to rent the?
It's only cost 75 dollars.
How much?
75 dollars.
Well, let's just, let's just rent the, have it there just in case.
So, Drew, how about this? Do you want to have your council meeting over there?
Yes.
We just start the council meeting at 5:00 and finish your business over there.
Counselor Drew, seniors, council itself.
And we'll have some people come.
Tanner.
Tanner.
So we'll look and make sure it's available.
Counselor Court.
Sorry, Counselor Court.
Go ahead.
It's more accessible than here, so the town.
You might have to preempt the road players.
Well, why don't we, if it's available, we'll advertise that your whole council meeting will be taking place at the town center. And that way, whenever the delegation's done, you can complete your business, so you don't have to move.
And we got, we got time to advertise a move of council.
But, oh yeah, you got 24 hours.
24 hours.
We're a month out, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you're good.
All right, before we touch on the Remembrance Day ceremony, which is item V, I want Counselor Court, you got a dedication of the new cemetery happening when?
Next Tuesday at 4:00. It'll be just a short little dedicatory thing. There'll be a prayer. I'll probably kind of emcee a little bit because it, so it'll be good. I'm not sure what Mr. Miller from Lusford just got planned. I think we'll have the mayor say a few short words. I would hope that we get it advertised a little bit quicker than we have, but.
The night, the night of our council.
Yeah, so just before count, like an hour, a little before 4:00.
Okay, so next Tuesday at 4:00 for the dedication of the new.
Yeah. The old one is in already out at the cemetery.
Yes.
So if you haven't had a chance to go out there, just sit back in the trees. It looks quite nice in there. It's already in, it's all set up.
So the town workers did that, right?
They did it, yep.
Thank you to the town workers.
Okay, we didn't, we didn't know they were doing it, so thank you to the town workers. It was done the evening.
Remembrance Day ceremony is going to be happening on Sunday.
I just think their, their meetings on the east and west take.
And we have, and the side was there. The mayor, you'll be speaking, do that right.
I know that I am, I am welcoming everybody, that's what I do normally.
I was the speaker, keynote speaker last year. And I don't know who they've assigned yet to do that.
They're working on it.
Yeah, speaker's not assigned yet. What she's done in the past, she's taken, I think it's a good idea, Kami's kind of running it right.
Yes.
And she's, she's taken the four, five or six of our veterans off of the cemetery out there and kind of told, had somebody tell their story, whether it's Kami or wherever it is. And they kind of worked, worked there and talked around that, but whoever speaks can obviously.
And this will be in the, in the high school.
What I can tell you is that in Belgium, they're doing a very, very big deal out of this hundreds-year celebration of the end of World War I. And especially recognizing the last soldier that was killed in action two minutes before the armistice was, was in place. And it was just beside the little town where I lived in, I lived in Minot, and he was in a town in Leuven kilometers away. The house where he lived, where he was going to bring flowers to the lady of the house. And the house is destroyed. They used to have a plaque, so they put a plaque on the, the house on the other side of the street. But this year, they're putting a full monument and they're doing incredible celebrations in Mons at the civic center, the Hotel de Ville. And having Canadian delegation, the red carpet, et cetera. I have different clipping of the newspaper in Belgium that have been sent to me. It's rather.
Are you going to go?
I was very desirous to go.
You were.
Because I know, I know those people and when they have the element of remember, remembrance is a Canadian military that comes out of the base and walks the street of Mons and with a piper in the front. And we used to walk.
Deal with it.
And, and be received by, by the town council and on the balcony. It was quite something. They really loved the Canadians. I can't tell you how much I loved the Canadians.
Just a brief history, the first Canadian, Commonwealth soldier killed and the last one killed in the war were 500 meters apart. It started there and it ended there.
And the first, the first killed has a plaque at the Hotel de Ville. It's a flag, they're flags that are commemorating the loss of the soldier fighting for the freedom of Belgium right there on that whole building. It's quite something.
I just wanted to make a correction. I wasn't the keynote speaker. I was the, I conducted the meeting, let's see. And I gave a little story.
But the emcee should be.
Emcee. That's what we got.
Well, who's the emcee?
Kami's been working on it, so she's got.
Okay, let's move on. This next item has been come up on council before. It's quite an involvement. We need to look at all the angles. We have a report, sort of thing drawn up by our bylaw officer or sheriff, basically.
Which one are we doing here?
OHB.
OHB vehicles.
We've had, we've had requests that people can use their golf carts to access the golf course from, in town. And it is controversial and there's a lot of liability involved and so forth, so let's open it up. How do you feel about this? Mayor?
The way I feel about it is really a matter of safety and security. So if a golf cart cannot be retrofitted to be properly insured and properly secured in order to have proper lighting, et cetera, I cannot see an off-car, a golf cart crossing a highway, that is a fairly busy highway, going to the golf course. If something wrong were to happen, and we don't know where we're going with that one, it's very expensive to deal with liability claim. We have so much insurance, but although I can see, for a matter of convenience, I can see their point of view. But I think the report that we got from our peace officer really shed some very good light as to the importance of having proper, proper pass, pathway in order for those vehicle to, to drive to town. We don't specially have such a thing in town. And that's always has been the issue, which anyways.
So let's remember something. If you retrofit a golf cart so it's highway-ready, that means you're going to restrict the age of the driver. That, that driver's going to have to wear a helmet.
Well, it tends to have all the safety features.
Absolutely.
A driver's license.
And, and if we, if we make a separate trail for golf carts, where do you begin this trailer?
We already have one, nature trail.
No, no, no. No, no, what about those people who live on East Hill and up on the South Hill? My concern is, is you're going to get John Hemey jumping on that golf course to be as more convenient to get on the golf course and take it to church where he's going.
Mini golf cart?
Or go-kart, or golf cart, yeah. And take it to church or, or run down to Extra Foods or something like that. And I'll, I'll tell you, I just, I have got a lot of knowledge for this. I don't know how you guys, let's open it up.
Their argument that I have when I just talk to people about this, because they go by my house all the time, is that they let those little, those little wheel-powered wheelchairs that I go, but they're only supposed to go on sidewalks, right? Or are they, can they go on the road?
I've seen them drive on the road.
Can you drive them on both? That's her argument, well, they can drive those all over town. My concern is you're passing, you're crossing a provincial highway.
Yeah.
So our bylaws would mean nothing because you still have to go according to Provincial Highway Act, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And it, it's, again, I, I live right on that corner and I don't think there's anything near close, but people do come down that road at 70, 75, and you've got some little person trying to get across from a golf cart. It's only a matter of time. And she won't want me to hear me say that, but that's kind of how it is.
Okay.
It's a safety issue.
Absolutely.
Others?
I'd love to buy one and have one, but I, I can understand the, the situation. My wife suggested this year, maybe we should get one. And I thought, well, you know, the traffic act says no. And if I had to go and upgrade one of those babies, they're already expensive. I'd rather take my car.
I think the safety issue is the most, utmost part. You get little kids, they drive those things.
Yeah.
Five to six-year-old kids would drive them.
To give you just a sense, this past summer, coming back and forth on the front of my house was one of those golf carts with four youths that were not driving very safe. I finally went out and told them, you know, that you are not legally allowed to drive on the road. And I would suggest you go see your parents.
Counselor Drew?
I just wondered if you had any statistics at all about the traffic with golf carts and.
Well, we don't have any because it's not allowed.
We have adult golfers, let me interrupt this, that can't even ride the, the golf carts out on the course without technical over. There have been two incidents out there. Counselor Self, how do you feel about it?
Here with speaking out here.
You got that little.
There are too many worms in that can.
That's right.
Again, I see a lot of people, my neighbor, going across there. They don't want to spend the extra whatever is stored out there.
Counselor Brown?
I think it's a. Did we get a good ticket?
I think it's a great idea, but I am worried. You let them, so we let the golf courts, we let the golf carts next to the golf course do it. We have to let the whole town do it. So now we've got them coming from all over and, and then can I drive my Skidoo and my Quad and my, it just, it's a concern.
Skidoo's are a different thing in emergency. You're, you're going to need them, right? And you can enact an emergency act that allows for that, you know, for rescues and stuff. But normally, they're not going to be right, those are on town.
The last.
But they do, I realize that, but it's still against the law.
So if somebody were to get into an accident with a golf cart? They would be liable, right?
My understanding is they have an uninsured, unregistered vehicle on the highway.
And so they would have to pay.
Well, their insurance company won't touch it. They will personally be paying out, right? Because why would their insurer insure something that's not registered?
So maybe we should educate public, our citizens, that that's the way the law is, to maybe reduce that kind of stuff going on. I'm sure that we can.
We're just not ready for the traffic, yeah.
Well, I think they know. I think that's why the people are asking us to push it, right? They're, they're wanting us, the people that called me are wanting us to put a bylaw in place so that we can make this happen, right? That's why we had Jeff look into it, and that's why we had our bylaw officer give us an update on Cold Lake and, because they heard that in Cold Lake, well, apparently you can do anything in Cold Lake. According to them, they wanted the same thing in Cold Lake. So I think that's, that's the story behind it essentially, is they know what they can and can't do.
I'm getting a flavor from this discussion that we just aren't going to go there. Is that the way you want to feel? All right. If that's the way to go, we're just going to inform the people that we're not going to put a bylaw in place and continue to do as we've done.
I don't know that you can put a bylaw in place that supersedes the highway traffic act anyway, so.
You can do it.
You just can't do it. So it wouldn't be a force, they would just come and nix it anyways, because it's not an enforceable bylaw.
All right. Next one is, I'll ask Counselor Brown to speak to this, communication policy.
Do you remember why you're speaking to this?
Yeah, I do. Okay, so when I, when we were at AUMA, I had the opportunity to listen to the mayor of Red Deer, who is fantastic, and she talked about how they have, they have, they're all about public relations and using technology to let, to inform their individuals that live in their city, what's up and coming, because they feel like it is better to give people the heads up rather than put out fires all the time. And so she, she gave a, she gave a bunch of questions and just the four questions that were asked were, do you have social media policy in place? I myself didn't know about it, so I asked Jeff to send us that information, which everyone's been sent. Something else she said are, what are your key messages? What is your go-to answer when a question is asked? Who needs to approve messages and when? Rather than having four billion people saying four billion different things, it's better to have a spokesperson. It's my understanding the mayor has done that in the past, which is fantastic. Something else she said is, who needs to approve the messages? And what happens when someone says something negative? What, there's a policy in place, you know what you're going to come up with. She then went on to talk about, she calls it the troll control, because there are people out there that want to slam things in Kerston and want to put council down and throw as many people under the bus. And something that she said that I thought was interesting is, some of these people just like to stir up fires. It really has nothing to do with the town of Kerston. It's just a fire that they're trying to fan the flames to, or Red Deer, or wherever it is you live. So anyway, I just thought it was really important because I feel like we live in a multimedia era, and I find that a lot of questions that get asked to me as a counselor, we've talked about it, and I, I don't know why they don't know about it. And I feel like we need to do a better job of getting our, yeah, getting our message and our plans and our goals out so that the public knows what we're doing. And we are pro on this and we are, we're proactive, we're trying to be. Anyway, that's, that's essentially why I wanted it.
We do have a communication policy in place. And we, we weigh on that pretty heavy in a lot of times, considering we have a lot of press that has attracted this community with some different views. The mayor has been up to our armpits plus trying to deal with fires on, on those kind of things. I can appreciate that. We as counselors have also confronted the mayor with different things that we've heard. And I don't know if, how you disseminate more information than what this council does. May, Mayor?
First of all, I want to say, Counselor Brown, you are right now. The more the people are informed, the better things go for us as council. In the past, we didn't have a real good policy. We put one in place at past council, and it has served us well. Can we do better yet? I think there's place for improvement. I understand what you're saying. What you're saying is, how do we as council promote ourselves better as to the positive we are, changes we are making for community? And how do we, how do we manage to get that message heard? And that may be what you are alluding to. For example, Counselor Brown was saying, you know, they have a lot of photo ops and things like that and publish it as a media, in a media, as a visual sense. Well, that is what council is doing, that's what individual counselors are doing. We're busy. And that may be the aspect that is not visible for us in our communication. And I think politicians, I mean, if you look at Glenn Marks, his newsletter and all that, here's where it was this day, that day, that day. Politicians in general have, at the federal and provincial level, are keener in the use of media than what we are here. I don't have the solution for you, but if you have one, tell us.
Counselor Speaker? One thing that I really loved, and that was when the mayor of Red Deer said that they were able to, so they went and presented to get the Winter Games in Red Deer. And of course, they got it. And when they asked, why did we get it? They were told, because of your social media package. That's what's bringing business to Red Deer. And I think for us, as far as economic growth, I want businesses and people from all over to be seeing positive things. I don't want them to always be hearing the negative things of Kerston. I want them to be hearing the positive and seeing positive things. You know, our courthouse, our music, whatever it is, we need to be more media-friendly. I think so. I think it can only help Kerston.
I cannot disagree with what you're saying.
Any other comments?
Yeah. I just want to, Counselor Brown and I talked about this last week a little bit. So I just wanted to, now my tablet's facing the wrong way. There we go. We put up a thing on the website today, karsten.ca, and it says, Carson Town Council attends AUMA, for an example. And I wanted to get the feel for this type of posting when you're attending things. So I actually took a picture of you guys sitting at your table when the premier was speaking. So Counselor Court, not that I'm sarcastic, but everyone else is doing okay. And so anyway, I have a picture of you guys sitting at the table there with the premier in the background, and we just did up a write-up that said, Mayor and Council attended the 2018 conference of the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association in Red Deer last week. The conference included three days of sessions, workshops, and meetings with more than 1,000 municipal elected delegates, including mayors, reeves, counselors, and administrators and other partners from across the province. Throughout the conference, meetings were held and heard, we should have put, and were heard from provincial ministers from the cabinet and premier who was in attendance. Topics of discussion were varied, but sessions included discussions on recycling, opioid crisis, intermunicipal collaboration, community leadership, affordable housing, and how AUMA advocates for the advancement on municipal agendas. And then we just a little bit of AUMA provides solutions and resources for municipal issues and challenges so that each municipality does not otherwise have to expend time and resources to individually take those actions. They host a convention annually to address current local issues. So we just put that out, you know, to see, after talking with Counselor Brown, I don't know that we can have a picture and put up every committee meeting in town, but you know, we need to do a little better at those. Hey, council was away from home and work and everything for a couple days doing all this. I think those are things we can do a little better. The other thing is when we get that strategic plan formulated.
We need to disseminate.
Formulated, sorry, formalized, then I can get out and really give a lot of that information, and Shem's working on that right now. So we hopefully have that really soon for your approval.
So those are good moves. Thank you so much.
So if you like that kind of posting, we'll try and do that a little more.
It's one of the faces that they have too.
When a bylaw is approved, rather than just a bylaw, kind of give a synopsis of.
You get that picture.
Couldn't they go to Lori in the paper?
Well, he can grab all this, yeah.
Does that, with you, Counselor Brown?
Send a template or two.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.
Okay, let's get into some real meaty situations. Business arising from our delegations. Okay, here we start, delegation from the museum. Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
All right, so to carry on with the conversation I had with Mr. Jensen regarding the budget, we had approved $3,700 for the 2018 budget. Unfortunately, due to the changes of their timeframe in budgeting, they didn't foresee the shortfall, and they are looking for us to kind of make up the difference somewhat of their shortcomings. So they're looking for, I can't remember the figure, but I think it was about 5,700 or something like that.
Forty, forty-two hundred plus.
Forty-two hundred, okay, all right. Forty-two hundred, so which would bring the total requisition to 7,900?
Hold on, Mayor.
Total of 4,200.
Forty-two fifty.
See, the problem is, we requisitioned last year, they never got the money, or what happened with that? There was some kind of goof.
Okay, maybe you can enlighten me, Councilor.
Forty-seven hundred, and then they're asking for another thousand.
Yeah, but I thought that 3,700 was.
Is that another thousand, or is that another 4,200?
You gotta give me straight on this one.
Okay, we're a little confused here.
You budgeted $3,500 to give them as per their request, they have it.
Yes. Was there something goofy happened with?
Oh, I don't know about that, I haven't heard.
Okay, so what's happening now?
Blaine sent me a letter on July 30th, and it said, the board has set an ambitious fundraising goal of several thousand dollars for the 2018 year, and asked that the town continues your support for a mandate in 2018 in the amount of 4,200.
Okay, all right, I get it.
Now, I made an error here, because I got it July 30th, I assumed he meant 2019, they were looking for 4,200.
That's what we're talking about.
So, Blaine called me and said, hey, what's your thoughts on that request? When could we get the check? And I said, well, we approved like eight months ago, the 3,500. And I said, you're happy to give it to you, it's on the way, I think we did that, and we do, it's gone, yeah, so they have it. But I said, I'm not, I don't have approval to cut you a check for 4,200.
So, but what I want, and we want 750 dollar extra.
More.
So just 700, 35 to 42.
Yeah, 700 dollars more.
Yeah, I thought of 4,250. So 700 dollar extras that they're, okay, so that's a little bit less, yeah, I mean, the, the 4,200, I was dragging on that, 700 dollar, I can swallow.
Now, Jeff, in their financial statement, it shows grant from the town of Carson for 17, was 3,700.
That's right, so I'm trying to understand here.
Okay, maybe it was. I thought I looked at the budget.
Well, it is in the audit.
Oh no, Jill's telling me it was 37, sorry, my mistake again.
Okay, so that's.
We sent him 3,700 dollars.
So they're looking for 500.
So they want 500 more.
400, 500, 500.
Better.
Now, let's all take a step back and roll. Let me reset on this whole issue.
Yes, let's get, let's get a discussion on this historical society. During the summertime, the town pays all of their casual help, all of it, to a tune, probably 14,000 to 17,000 dollars.
Do you know what our season's about, right? 14, 15, 16?
About 17, 18.
17 grand? So it's not all we give them, because we pay all our staff for 17 grand.
And then we own the card home, so we do all of the maintenance on the card home.
Utilities.
We provide them with, while they rob the internet services from us, Wi-Fi services through this building. Is there anything else that we provide for them? Insurances and stuff like that?
Do they pay us back on the insurance? Or we don't even do it? Yeah, because they own the building. We don't own that building, so we don't insure it.
I mean, you're correct, we are helping them. But right now, what I would like to know is a follow-up to Councilor Self asking regarding different type of mode of financing yourself. Because the truth of the matter is, the government does not give us grants, but they give us the opportunity to raise money some other way. And it's maybe a moral issue for some, but the truth of the matter, if you don't play their game, you don't get the money either. It's a moral issue.
So I had a sidebar conversation with Mr. Jensen on the way over, and suggested that they pursue the CCL, because once you get on the list, then it's almost given money every two to three years, so I think he's going to pursue that. I told him, more than half the charge, and so people volunteer to vote for him, so that's not. The other comment I have is, since we're going to be tit for tat tonight, how about if he goes to the county and asks them for some money, because it is the Carson District Historical Society.
I should love, but it's, it's an interesting take.
Mr. Jensen, Cat Murphy told me that I already talked to county, are they going to? I'm not sure on that.
They are.
But if they're not, they will, I'll bring that up next meeting.
Can I interject a little bit in here? A few years ago, they did have a delegation go to the county and got 7,500 bucks to do some work on identifying grave sites and stuff like that. So they have gone, and the county has, in the past, given them money.
And Mr. Jensen is a county resident.
Yeah.
If they have enough, I'll bring that up with them.
Okay, so maybe we should have this total discussion in our, in our budget and finance, where do we sit with this added 500 dollars?
Right now, they're looking for 500 dollars for the 2018 budget, which is already has been set. So in other words, or we find a pocket of money somewhere, or we give them 250 dollars for them to match it with their county.
Just keep in mind, they have 125,000 dollars in cash.
It's not as if they don't have money.
Restricted money for building, they got a grant to take care of repairs, they can't use it on operations or anything like that.
So if he's at 80,000 to 90,000, that leaves him about 50,000, I think.
Well, yeah, I'm surprised that that was not indicated, that restricted reserve.
Counselor Court?
We're talking a relatively small group of dedicated people over there. We're paying 15,000, whatever it is, for workers, for every dollar that goes there, there's at least 2 dollars in volunteers, and that doesn't get any, people are volunteering to keep these things open all day long. I guess we have to decide, do we want this thing to stay operating? Do we want the car over there every summer? Because the people that are doing a lot of this aren't making any money out of it. The 4,200 is basically for utilities. So that's just the way you have to kind of look at it. We're not going to make money off it, they can't really raise a ton of money on their own, they're trying, and Blaine's doing a great job, and the last year or two, they've done a lot more than they've ever done in the past, just a different ideas going on. I've never seen that group so unified in the last three or four years like they have right now.
Mayor?
So here is maybe to be able to kind of come to a decision. Are we as a council willing to help them with 500 dollars this year only, and until they get themselves a funding formula that makes sense? Right now, I am not sure that I cannot draw from their reserves, but we need to decide, or they draw from their reserve, or we help them.
Well, maybe that's where Councilor Court needs to get in there and ask them, you know, how restricted is this money? Is some of this money for the use for, for operating costs? And if so, how much? And, you know.
Restrictive funds is for the.
We need to know that.
But they have some unrestricted.
Oh yes, but the restrictive funds is basically for, from the, from the societies for upgrades to the building.
To the building itself.
Like the outside windows and stuff like that.
You see, unrestricted, that we need to understand what's.
I do know that any time they do anything over there, it's a ton of money.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, they shouldn't, they shouldn't, they've tried to get an elevator and they're making it more accessible, but we're really not that cold as far as, you know, people with disabilities aren't.
I recommend that we give the Historical Society the extra 500 bucks for this year, they give their budget requests in line with our budget here, so we know for next year what their request is.
Maybe that into more.
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
Where is the money coming from though?
Yeah, what funding do we have that's?
How about that stuff, do you have to offer?
Jill, what are we gonna say, and there's a few thousand bucks in our miscellaneous, our public relations account that we use for kind of this odd stuff? There is on there.
Back on its own, that's all we have.
I will go and convince you to think of it tonight. We got 500 bucks for the county.
I will recommend that they go talk to the county, they need to.
So why don't we make a read of it?
We have two recommendations on the table. Councilor Self, yours is to go with the whole 500 dollars, and bring them up, and continue on with that in response to their utilities.
Can I make a friendly amendment? Could we say, in order to incorporate a councilor's ID, up to 500 dollars? So if the county is willing to, would you accept a friendly amendment?
Jill, did you get that recommendation? Okay, Councilor Court?
Again, my fear is that we're just one or two bad years away from half, half of those people not there anymore, because a lot of them are pretty old, actually, you know, so we want to try to encourage younger people, and we do have some younger people on, on that committee, but we don't want to discourage them.
But as a comment, I must say, I'm encouraged to see there is someone at the helm that has a sense of the future, and a sense of how to run an operation, so that is, that is encouraging to me.
In the past, we've had good presidents, we've had everybody, but now, he has a little bit more of a business sense, some others had a little more of a museum sense, they're working together better than I've seen them do in the last few years.
Council Chairman, Chairman Jensen is very, very astute on programs and stuff like that.
Well, they all bring their own flavor to it, and he's done a good job.
Okay, so we have that recommendation on, on record, all in favor of that recommendation? Passed. Okay, Mr. Rocky Williams, on his telephone post problem.
I think you know that there is his problem.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment? The pole has been an issue forever and ever. How come I have a son that don't know there's a pole there? Keep on hitting it.
It's the second time.
They should know by now, there is a pole, and it is on the property line.
So from what I understand, when you're backing up, if you talk to the RCP, or if you talk to any insurance company, they will say that you're the guilty one. My son was out at a youth event, at another youth park behind him, just as a joke, and he pulled out and hit this kid who was obstructing his way, he didn't see him, and basically, bottom line was, is it was my son's fault, and that's the way it is. I mean, I don't see how we can justify saying, oh, it's our pole, and, I mean, they're backing up, it's there, it's, you know.
Let's, let's deal with one of the two things. Let's deal with the location of the pole first. Are we going to move it? Are we going to leave it there? What's happening?
What I want to know is, that new pole on the property line.
It's right on the property line.
If it's right on the property line, then, like, I don't understand why she's saying it's on the middle of her driveway, which it's not. I happen to property manage the house next to it, her aunt's house. And I tell everyone of my tenants, when they go in there, there are a power pole there, you are responsible if you back into it. If you hit it, it's your problem, you need to be aware. So when you get in your vehicle, go back out, take a look, and be aware that that pole is there, because it's your problem if you hit it. And it's the same thing with these people, I, the law says that you are responsible with the operation of your vehicle. If there's a garbage can, a big humongous garbage can that gets put there by somebody pulling a crank, and they put it on the driveway, and I pull out of my driveway and I hit that garbage can, I'm the one who has to pay for the damage, or my insurance. And I, you know, that's the bottom line. I don't think we're responsible. Especially if that power pole, the new one, is on the property line.
Well, if it was, if it was brand-new location.
Yeah.
Okay. That is a little bit what the contest was. Is that pole truly still on the property line, or has it moved? I would imagine it is on the property line.
Counselor?
But the thing to say is no longer at the proper setting, so that is something that I cannot decide yes or no.
If that's the case, when I go up there, you look right down that post, and then there's a fence.
The new pole?
Yeah. You look right down there, and there's a fence, it's between the two properties.
Three and nine lines.
Because that is what the same to argue, that it is no longer on the property line, that it has shifted 20 centimeters.
Yeah.
So, I think it's really important, so our head electrician, Leonard Nichols, in his report, he said, I estimate that the existing pole has been in the current location for 40-plus years. As we are doing this work, I am trying to move and keep poles on property lines. This one has two overhead services that will go to 442 and 434. No matter what side of the driveway we went to, the line would have been crossing the other person's property, and then the other property owner would have a pole in the middle of their property. So, the thing to me, it's been there for 40-plus years, yes, it has moved, you know, slightly, it has, but, oh, it just.
But again, the way the poles are arranged and situated, it's accordingly to their services in the house.
Yeah, it is.
And you start moving poles away from services, or on the other side of services, and expensive, it's very expensive to start stringing new lines and so forth like that. Counselor Court?
What she said.
Okay.
Their view with gas lines is what we're.
All right, now, we, I think we've basically dealt with where it's going to be the pole there, is that right?
Yeah.
I mean, if the pole is at the proper location according to our electrician, who are we to say is not?
Exactly.
This is on top.
And the old pole will be cut down. It will be cut off.
It would just be the one pole. See, the one pole that is there is on the property, two feet onto the other property.
Yeah.
If that's the case, and it's never been an issue.
It's not on their property, it's on the town's property. It's in the boulevard, it's not on their.
Yeah, that's right. It's on the town's property. Exactly.
Okay, second issue is the damage to the vehicles. Rob, where are we going to do with that? It's not our fault.
Well, if the pole is at its proper place, how can we be responsible for somebody backing into it and not seeing it? Oh.
But they also stated that they hit it several other times.
In other locations.
Not paying attention.
So that's what I find absolutely difficult to accept. If you know there is a pole, so you're backing out, knowing that you could hit the pole and you don't correct your drive-in, I don't know.
And the other thing, Councilor Drew said, the law says that you're the one that's responsible. It's not us, it's not the pole, it's the driver, that's their fault. I backed into a power pole. I did not go and ask Steve at the drive-in, or come to the town to ask them to pay for my repairs, it cost me 1,000 bucks.
But I mean, I can, I can understand where they're coming from.
I do too.
You can cause damage, thousands of dollars, right? Because it's a pole, so.
We caught the year after that.
Doesn't change a bug.
We've all done it.
Yeah, we've all done it.
Everyone here has hit something.
Our electrical system does, our electrical people do a fantastic job. Give you an example. I have, I have a new pole in front of my house, I want to expand my gate in the front of my house, and the pole would be right in the middle of that.
Swing?
Entrance into, into my backyard. So Leonard come up there, brought his guys up there, and they looked at it, looked at it, and I asked him, can you move it just right onto the property line where the old pole is? And he says, no, but would you be satisfied with it being about six or eight inches to the north? And I said, absolutely, and that's what he did. So he was very accommodating in that situation, and I don't think he does anything else, you know, that, that, he has, he looks at every situation and carefully wonders what's going to happen in the future.
But that was another of the arguments, that they were not consulting with the historical society.
Well, yeah, but if they're not there, how do you consult them? I mean, our electrical department has to move forward to get this job done.
And it is our property. It wasn't their property.
All right, Jeff, can you thank them for their, their delegation to council, and tell them the results of their delegation?
You bet.
Okay, another deep one, let's deal with Mr. Maylin, and we'll start with the Ellis Okay, another deep one, let's deal with Mr. Maylin and we'll start with the Ellison property, start with.
So do I understand this correctly? Phase two is, has got the utilities in there. Is that correct?
One thing to note on your OneDrive is if you open them, there's a file at the bottom that's a PNG file. It's an image that will show you, I dropped it on there a few minutes ago. That'll show you the area that we're talking about. Said Sage Management Ellison Property. It should be right in the file.
Better here.
And if you open that, it'll show you the two subdivided phases.
Right. So is that correct? Well, phase two has got service, it does not have services.
Jill, I don't believe it's fully serviced in phase two, is it? I think they stubbed everything off at the end of phase one. Yeah.
I got you. Right there where the, where hooks are on there.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Jeff, I'm trying to understand the following. When there is a third party involved into an agreement that previously allowed for an abatement of taxes, is there an obligation then for the third party to receive the same treatment? Or is it something in the document that is passed along to the new owner that stipulates that the taxes, tax rate will change?
So this one, I think, is interesting because of the letter of the law and the intent of the law. Let me explain. The letter of the law for the Ellison group said, "When you sell a lot to a third party, it will become taxable at its residential assessment."
So you would have known that.
But when Joe and Jane Citizen bought their lot from Ellison's, of course, it now became taxable at a residential assessment. But, but Joe and Jane were just buying one lot to build their house on. The intent of that clause in the development agreement, in my mind, didn't consider someone buying an entire development wholesale. I would suggest that wasn't the intent trying to capture in that agreement. Now, the letter of the law says Sage Management's a third party and they purchased from Ellison's and so the tax implication changes because a third party bought it.
Okay.
So when the purchase happened and the lawyers went through everything, things changed because they are a third party to Ellison.
All right, so the intent of the purchaser, which is Mr. Miller, right now, Miller, is to develop that piece of property. So it would be fair enough to say in that case, if he wants to develop, would it be somehow with intent of the law, fairer for him to have the tax abated? That's maybe the question we need to answer. Personally, I think if he's a developer, there's maybe an appetite for us to say, yes, the condition should be the same. Because, let's face it, if a former developer had that clause to allow him to sit on lots that are vacant for a while, it's the same story here.
Yes.
In the interest of moving all of this along, I would say yes to that one and no to the other one.
Exactly.
And let's take a straw poll again of this.
Yes. Okay, are we ready for a straw poll?
Counselor, if I could point out, Mr. Chairman, what we would do in this case, if it goes as it may, straw poll, just do your straw poll tonight. What we'll do is, and Jill, correct me if I'm wrong, we would prepare a clause in a development agreement for Mr. Maylin on the Ellison properly, property. And we would simply do nothing on the other one because status quo would prevail.
Yeah.
Does that sound right?
On the hotel.
Yeah, if that's where council goes, I'm just suggesting that nothing would be required. Counselor Drew, can I just ask a question then? Mr. Maylin talked about the structure of the Cabo Hotel and that he's had it, he's had it assessed and it's going to be less in 2019, correct? Yes, so... So he's asking for us to retroactively... He'd actually ideally like it reduced far more than even what it's reassessed at. The problem, I think, you have there, Counselor, is I, I think you're walking a difficult line trying to change the tax rate for one property.
Exactly.
Because the act says you have to make it equitable.
And fair to all.
So they're walking down Main Street doing the same thing.
That's right. The whole, so they have to change basically the same law and search to be...
Because there's a lot of empty properties and they're being taxed at the appropriate rate.
And in fact, ironically, many communities would do this the adverse way. If you have a property that is vacant for a certain amount of time, you're charged a surcharge.
Yeah.
As a motivation for development. So you're taxed more because the property sits idle.
Right.
Now, I'm not suggesting that, by the way, but it's difficult for you to take one property and say, "We're going to apply it." If you have no jurisdiction over assessment, you don't get to manipulate it and you have no say. So your jurisdiction is on rate. How do you reconcile to your rate payers that this rate for this one property is different than any similar properties? That's difficult. I also think that he went into the purchase of that building eyes wide open.
Yes.
And he now doesn't have tenants that are actually paying him rent, but that could happen anywhere down Main Street. If I owned a building in Main Street and my tenant left, I would still have, I'd still have to pay my taxes, right? So I...
I can throw, I'm, I do property management and I have somewhat, some owners that the tenants have moved out and I haven't been able to get renters in there for a couple of months. Is she going to come and ask just for reduction in her taxes because of that? It wouldn't be appropriate to give it to them.
Okay, so let's, let's move forward...
So maybe it was what Gary says.
With Counselor Silks.
Silks.
Proposal. Are you good with it, Counselor Barnes?
Yep.
Counselor Drew?
Absolutely.
Mayor?
Absolutely.
Counselor Brown? Counselor Court? All right.
Jill, any, anything we're missing here? You're just up to speed on this whole thing really well, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, moving forward, Mr. Gibbons, the, the investment club. Yes?
Okay, I'm really understanding that the donation policy we have doesn't fit the bill very well, but on the other hand, I also feel that those young people who achieve beyond achievement should receive the proper support of the town to move forward. So I really know we don't have a big, big deep pocket, but if we could find a thousand dollars for the four of them, I would be willing to move that forward.
I agree.
I agree.
No.
Madam Mayor, would you do that as a recommendation to council? I like that one that way.
Okay, we got a recommendation on this one.
Just want to ask one question. So the county donation is hinging on if we donate the same amount. Is that correct?
Well, who knows?
No, I think it was just a, it was just a check.
No, it was a recommendation.
It was a recommendation.
Really, honestly, regardless of what the county has done, every number presentation like this, I would say it has merit on its own and deserves support.
I agree. Thank you.
So my recommendation to council is to support the delegation, Mr. Gibbons' delegation for students to receive two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar per, per student to support them in their endeavor to have a trip to, to one, two.
I just said two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per person.
That's a thousand bucks.
That was four.
Was it four, five?
There's four.
Okay, so Counselor Barnes, you're good with that?
Yeah.
You bet.
Okay, there's your recommendation.